The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have the members please introduce themselves, starting at my far right?
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelp, Board of Finance.
Michael Moth, Board of Finance.
Derek Chinchewski, Board of Finance.
Mike Ferney, Board of Finance.
Calvin Brown, City Council.
Anthony Demato, City Council.
Jody Zilgagney, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Town Clerk Therese Pack.
And I'm Mayor Ken Kocain. Item number two. I'm sorry, item number one.
Approval of minutes of the regular joint board meeting on April 11, 2017.
Motion approved, second.
Motion remains second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number two.
Is the consent calendar. There are 10 items. Two A is to make an additional appropriation of $300 within the special grants and donations fund for the CERT team funded by donations. Two B is to transfer $5,980 within the engineering operating budget for program supplies. Two C is to transfer $10,000 within the equipment, within the building maintenance operating budget for repairs and maintenance. Two D is to transfer $51,000 within the sewer operating and assessment fund. Two E is to reduce an appropriation within the capital projects fund by $8,160 for professional services. Two F is to make an appropriation of $8,160 within the capital projects fund for professional services. Two G is to transfer $20,359 within the police department's operating budget for repairs and professional fees. Two H is to reduce an appropriation within the special education grant fund by $250,000 for a reduction in the alliance grant. Two I is to make an additional appropriation of $5,000 within the special education grant fund for the quality enhancement grant. And two J is to make an additional appropriation totaling $45,850 within the special grants and donations fund funded by grant revenue.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion remains second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number three.
To transfer $25,000 from the general fund contingency account to the insurance operating budget.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion remains second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number four.
Is the monthly revenue and expense report of the comptroller.
Good evening, everyone. Everything's going along fine as far as the operations of the general fund and other funds. There's no significant problems to report, other than you'll see tax collections are very, very good. We're exceeding last year's numbers. Excuse me. A little pollen. But the news to present to you is what happened last week. We did three rating presentations. One was telephonic with the, with Fitch. And then we had two presentations, motor coach presentations, ending up at ESPN. I've got to tell you, I've been associated with probably 15 of these in my career. And the mayor was outstanding, outstanding. He was half mayor, half town manager. I mean, he just, he kept the ball rolling. Once we got into the one-hour tour, his and the finance office sat in the back because we were not part of it. But the team was fantastic with Justin Malley and Tom Denote up front, right, right next to the, excuse me, next to the two analysts from Moody's. And then, that was on Wednesday. On Friday, we ended up with S&amp;P. So Fitch was a warm-up for us. We kind of figured that we would, that's why we did a teleconference, because we had the AAA and we feel that we were going to be reaffirmed, and we were. We practiced several times in the mayor's office. My staff practiced several more times for the finance part. But once again, your knowledge, mayor of the city, really came through and they were impressed, especially when it came to the industrial parks. You knew the businesses. Justin knew what they did. You've met all the principals. The rating agencies were very impressed with that. And as a matter of fact, I had a follow-up call with Moody's today, and they had mentioned that. So basically, it was a, it was a trying time. At the same time, you're trying to put your best foot forward, and you don't want to show inside you're doing one of these deals. But everybody was, was well-practiced. So at the end of the other two, we haven't got the report back from S&amp;P and Moody's. I spoke, I guess I pointed out, I spoke with Moody's this morning. They had six follow-up questions that were quite technical about the grand list and about surpluses and use of fund balance and things like that. They had a follow-up. And I thought I was through. And then 3 o'clock, I got another, I got a call from Moody's and I wanted to talk about it further. So that, I think, is a positive thing. When they are really digging deep, they're not just fluffing it off. So we have some good shots at things. They're very difficult. S&amp;P is a little bit lighter, as far as that concerned. But all three rating agencies, and you can see when you read the AAA report, that's, not many communities have a report like that in their hand in Connecticut. They, two things that stood out with S&amp;P and Moody's and Fitch, but S&amp;P and Moody's both said management, excellent, excellent management. Depth of staff, I've always expressed to all three rating agencies in the finance office. But also, this time, it showed depth of staff citywide, with an excellent assessing office who explained the grand list. Justin Malley and Mark Thomas did a fantastic job. Tom Denote and, and, they're fantastic. Just the explanations and a one-two punch with the mayor as they were talking about companies and things like that. So they, they really appreciated the depth of staff. And when we got into the conference room at ESPN, and we then turned it over to my office to talk about the financials, and both, both firms used the word stellar. And, and one of the things, they really, they asked several times to make sure it was clear, use of fund balance to balance the budget. That was a big positive. It's a zero. And it took us seven years to get there. And lots of times, you hear the public say, well, you've got a large fund balance and you should use it to balance the budget, but it won't be there next year if you use it one time. And it's a big negative in the, in the rating agencies. They, they want that, what they call flexibility. And they made sure, they asked me several times, you not using fund balance. And we pointed to where it's not being used. They really enjoyed the level that we brought fund balance up to. We pointed out to them, it went from 12% to 15%. That was by design, and that's the word I used. And I basically used that we manage fund balance. They also, both rating agencies enjoyed that we had five years of surpluses and no deficits. And the, and the surpluses are growing. They also wanted to know about the future. They spent a lot of time with us talking about the state of Connecticut and its impact on Bristol, and of course, all the other communities. But specifically to Bristol, we were the ones being rated. So I addressed, along with staff, the, the teacher, the shift in teachers, 400 million, and we have 6, 6 million of that. There's a lot of talk, the mayor and I both talked, telling that the legislative, legislative leaders are telling us that's not going to happen. We expressed that to them. But we put in 3 million, and we pointed that out to them. We're kind of hedging our bet, because we didn't know at the time, a month ago, where we were going to end up with that. We also lost 7 million in the ECS grant, and we pointed that we took the full hit on that. But I also then explained to, to both rating agencies that if better information is known before we set the mill rate and adopt the budget, we can rescind those things. And we can lower the, lower the mill rate and maybe put some, some appropriations back and restore, maybe public works, maybe consideration of Board of Ed, whatever the case may be. So they, they were interested to know our plan, and they spent a lot of time talking about that. The 12, 13 million in special education was not a concern, because it's not a revenue, it's not an operating revenue, and they, they weren't concerned as much as they were about, what are we doing about teacher shift? And what are we doing about the ECS loss? We, we, we covered it fully. They were happy. They spent a lot of time talking, and I, again, use depth of staff. We, Skip did an excellent presentation on the, on our debt service, where we've been, what we're issuing, 20 million, and 3.4 in notes, and, and what's the future with it. And they loved the 10-year plan. We switched over from a 5 to a 10. Everything that, that is the GFOA standard in the industry, they knew that, and they complimented us on that. So we are going, the third, of course, let's talk about our warts and blemishes. The, we had two out of three. Fitch downplays our warts and blemishes. Moody's and S&amp;P did bring it out to us a little bit. There's three things. There's management, there's financials, and demographics. And it's hard to put a AAA demographic on a commu, on a city when you're trying to compare a AAA to a Avon or a Simsbury. And the difference is wealth factors. So they, they brought, you don't have, and they said to me, you don't have the wealth factors that other AAA's would have, and to be in the same class as them. And the housing stock, you know, you go up Farmington Valley and you see homes beginning at half a million dollars and going to multimillion dollar homes. I worked there for 10 years, I know. So they mentioned that. But, but they also talked about that, and the mayor pointed out, that the unemployment rate, since you took office, has, has been chopped in half. It was about an 8 percentage.
It was 8.6 when I took office, and as of December 31st, it's 4.3.
They like that. That's what they want to hear. So, you know, the demographics are, are what they are in a city, but other cities, like that received a upgrade, like Middletown, you know, they, they have a fully developed downtown. We talked about the Bristol Hospital coming in and the signed contract. That was a very positive thing that they wanted to know, and future development over there. So overall, you know, we downplayed the demographics. They're, they're not, they're not totally detrimental, as proved by Fitch giving us the AAA. So the other things are so strong, they overpower that. They love that the pension fund was fully funded. They love that we're putting the, the full amount of the actuarial required amount in there, because there's a little bit of a dip on the city side. They enjoyed that. They also really enjoyed the other post-employment benefit schedule, fully funding that liability over 18 years. And we're eight years into it, and we showed them the schedule, and we showed them the history of what we've done, that we're not only saying it, but we do what we say. So things like that were very, very positive to them. And it was just, it was an exhausting few days, but, but it was very rewarding, as you can tell that we reaffirmed a AAA. And that's, and the other two know that this took place, because I told them. So basically, we're playing one against the other, and that's, that may push, you know. We don't, we don't want to put ourselves too high on a pedestal and then get disappointed, and, you know, the fall is great. So we hope for the best, but that's what took place last week, and the team was fantastic, believe me.
Before we go to questions, let me just say that, last, this was the first one that I've been involved in. I think it's safe to say probably Justin's first one, and maybe Tom's first one as well. I'm not sure about Tom.
On a municipal level, yeah.
And municipal level. But what a team we had. We practiced, it was an exhausting week. Tuesday was a phone call. Wednesday was the, the first one. Thursday, we critiqued it, decided that we wouldn't change anything. And I think Friday, if possible, we even did better than on, on Wednesday.
Yeah.
So we were all mentally exhausted, but Glenn, Robin, Skip, Jody, in his office, really did a great job putting it together. And, and I can't forget Mark as well. Mark in Justin's office was, was really there, so.
And you got us a good rate on the motor coach.
And we got a good rate on the motor coach. Want to thank Wallenberg for that. And ESPN, they really went above and beyond. They let us use their conference room. And then we had lunch in their conference room, and then had our meeting in their conference room. So that was pretty impressive, to sit at ESPN. So they, they stepped up to the plate. They knew what we were doing.
And then we have pictures at the sports desk, and the analysts were just all beaming that they get to show this to their kids and their family. And I spoke with Moody's today, and he says, I sent it to everybody in my family, everybody, grandparents, you name it. And he says, you know, the kids were just, daddy, that's you, that type of thing. So it was, that was a lot of fun.
Any questions?
Yes, through the chair, Your Honor. Glenn, why don't you be a little remedial with me, so we can kind of cut right through all of that, right down to the core. So there are three rating agencies, right? Fitch, Moody's, S&amp;P? Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And we have a AAA rating from Fitch.
Yes.
But not from Moody's and S&amp;P?
No. And Moody's is, we have a AA2. The next rate would be a AA1, then AAA.
And how about S&amp;P?
And S&amp;P is a AA+. The next rate would be a AAA.
Fitch had already given us a AAA rating, and that's why you're saying they reaffirmed their AAA rating?
That's correct. And what's interesting about Fitch doing that is they didn't do it on a full-blown presentation like we did. They dated, it was called a surveillance call, an update.
Right.
That's rare, to get a AAA on an update, and what happened.
Well, very good. Now, how do those three things work together? I mean, if we have one AAA rating, but then we don't have two other AAA ratings, how do those three things work together for an overall rating for the city? Or is that not how it works?
No, that's, it, it, what happens is, for the future, if we get a, a increase in any of the other two, and for the future, it's going to put pressure on the one that didn't do it. Okay? Because they see that. Those three market reports go out nationwide.
Yep.
And the, just like, again, that's the reason I brought on Fitch last time, because I knew we were strong. So that plays towards Moody's and S&amp;P, like, oh, they got a AAA from Fitch, you know, why are we being held back? And they also don't want to be dropped from rating presentation. We're not mandatory to go to all three. We can pick and choose who we want to go to. And so they know that, and they want to remain in the game, because there's a fee to have this done.
Right.
And so if we get an upgrade by one of the two remaining, for the future, you're going to have a nice shot at the third one coming along. It may take some time, but it'll come along. When I got the AAA in Avon, it took three times to get it. And on the third time, we, we, we were successful. So they, they hold back as much as they can, but if you get, you get two out of three, the third one will come along.
So from a city's standpoint, from a financial standpoint, right, as the comptroller, obviously, if we have a AAA bond rating, then we can bond money at a lower rate, right?
That's the whole point.
Right. So what's the substantive difference between having one, but not the other two? How much lower does our bond rating go?
The market usually looks at the highest rating.
They look at the highest rating. Okay. That's good enough. They look at the highest rating.
Yeah, it's very good. And then we are issuing our debt on May 18th, it's a Thursday.
Right.
And then the settlement, so we'll issue the debt. We will know then, by bid process, what the rate is. And then we'll settle on the 30th of May, and we'll be, we'll be all set for year. There's 20, 20 something, 20.3, I believe, million in bonds. And we also issued something new, 3.4 in notes. Okay? Short-term, to grab the short-term rates are really down here. So that, we can roll for 10 years until we feel that, that you want to issue long-term. So originally, we're going to do 25 or 30. It came down to 21 and 3.4 in notes, and that was on advice of our financial advisor, Matt Spurndell. I worked with him closely on that. That's what he thought would be the best avenue. So we'll know, but it's going to be off, it's going to be off to AAA. It's going to be off to AAA.
And what is, is there a deadline for them getting back to you on a decision about AAA yea or AAA no?
Yeah, there has to be, because they have to issue that market report nationwide to the underwriters. So we are going to know either late Thursday or Friday morning.
Okay.
When we get to know, and I would be just as satisfied for this community if it's all three are reaffirmed, because it's a very high rate, and they have said that to us. It's difficult to get to that rate. But either late Thursday or Friday, we are going to know. And then, once, then they'll ask me to approve and review, so there's no mistakes in, in the numbers. And we do that immediately. It's a priority. Send it back to them, and bang, it goes out to the marketplace.
Okay. And you said the marketplace looks at the city's lowest rating or the highest?
Highest.
Their highest rating?
They'll look at all three, but they, they key in on the AAA.
Right.
That's, that's stellar to them. That's, that's, that's the cream of the crop. That's the filet mignon.
Okay. And then if the, if S&amp;P and Moody's disappoints us and they don't issue us a AAA bond rating right now, what's the next step? When do we go at them again?
Try and try again.
Right.
Two years from now.
Two years?
Yeah. Two years from now.
Very good.
And you keep at it with them. Like I said, it took me three times to get it in Avon, and third time was a lucky charm. So it may take you three times here, but you're so high, you're teetering. What will, what will put, what will influence them in the future will be the development of downtown, and any, and filling of the, of the office parks. Filling of the office parks, the downtown, that type of thing, creating grand list growth, future growth. They asked us about that. The growth this year was 1.67% over the prior year. Their ears perked up when they, when they heard that from, from Tom. So the, the key is future development for the, for the community.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Glenn.
You got it.
Any other questions?
I have a couple, Your Honor. First of all, thank you for all the work you've done on, with the rating agencies.
You're welcome.
But I did want to get back to the budget itself. You mentioned, when you were talking, that we've had surpluses for a number of years in a row. I know it's early, but do you have a sense of what will be, how our fiscal year will end this year?
Yes, they asked, they asked that number of us. They, they wanted to know for what's going to happen in June, a couple months from now, and what are your predictions for next year, given the state is going to even be in worse shape than it is now? We have a slide that showed that it's possible that we're probably going to have a $1 million surplus. They asked, where is it coming from? And it's coming from several sources. Our building permits are higher than budget, and we're very prudent, we told them, in when we budget. That's the key word they like. Our investments in our operating fund is higher, over budget by tens of thousands. And conveyance tax is doing very, very well, with all the purchases of properties and the conveyance that goes along with that. Those three, along with open positions in the, and that the mayor reviews all the positions, a lot of positions stay open for quite a long period of time. I've had one in my office that's been three or four months. We just filled it. She's starting on the 15th of May. So those, those positions at 50, 60,000 dollars apiece, and if you have 10 or 12 of them, they add up. And then if you add the, on the revenue side, it adds up. There will probably, and plus, we did not budget for the, the permits for the hospital. We didn't budget for a couple permits that the mayor talked about with potential, Justin is dealing with potential companies coming into 229 and the southeast industrial parks. So we don't budget anything until it's signed. So we'll do it next year, but, but it'll fall probably to fund balance this year. So we're pretty confident at, at a million dollars.
And, and where will that be allocated in terms of the coming year's mill rate? I mean, will that be?
That, that mill rate will already be out the door. So that, that just falls to fund balance. Or, as I like to say to them, we manage fund balance. We may take a portion of that, put it into the sinking fund to balance, to fund next year's projects, like we're doing this year, the 771,000. We may put a little bit into economic development if, if the new things, grants come to fruition and draws down that fund. So we'll be looking at, at things like that, managing. And I'll be, I'll be working very closely in the transition with the new comptroller to make sure that this is how we've done things in the past. And she may add a little spice to it as, from her own personal experiences, too.
Okay. And on the legal bills subject, we have two additions this month, two new bills that were billed and paid for new work on that issue. I see one for $1,123.50 and another for 1,600. Is that what you?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Glenn.
You got it, mayor.
Item number, any other business?
Yes, sure. I'd just like to bring up something. I know this is a topic that was, we talked about a few months ago, but I'd like to put it on the agenda if we could.
David, microphone.
If we could put this on the agenda. I'd like to start talking about Memorial Boulevard School again. I know that we're waiting on the state and what's going on there, but I think we need to start the discussion again, so that when, when we can pull the trigger, one way or the other, we're ready to go. So I'd like to make a motion that we either put it on the agenda for next month, or call a special meeting.
So move. Second. Okay, we could, whatever you want to do. If you prefer a special meeting, we'll have one. If you want to put it on the agenda, we could do that, too. We're still working on the parking. The parking is an issue. We're still negotiating with Barnes Group. And we're still waiting to see what the state does. So we really can't make a decision until we have a parking. That's our main thing.
Right. But again, the longer we put off the discussion, the more out of mind it's going to be. And I think if, you know, when we're ready to go, I think we should be ready to pull the trigger. So I think we need to have a, you know, if we need a special meeting, then let's have a special meeting, because at least we'll be able to focus totally on that.
I think I'll, I'll schedule a special meeting of the joint board.
That'd be great. That's what I meant. Yeah, that's why I brought it up now, rather than bring it up just in council.
We'll, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Motion adjourned.
Well, through the chair, excuse me, point of order. That was technically a motion. I think we do need to have a vote.
I'm sorry. You're right, correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Any other discussion? Motion adjourned.
Motion remains second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Council meeting will start in five minutes.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have the council please introduce themselves, starting at my far right?
Calvin Brown, District 1.
Anthony Demato, District 1.
Jody Zilgagney, District 2.
Dave Mills, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Mary Fortier, District 3. Town Clerk Therese Pack.
Assistant Dawn Lovella.
And I'm Mayor Ken Kocain. Can we have a moment of silence for our troops on active duty? Thank you. And first, we are going to do the youth recognition awards, so I'd ask Councilman Brown to join me in front.
Good evening, councilmen and women, as well as the mayor. Tonight, we are happy to be celebrating the 25th Annual Bristol Youth Service Volunteer Awards. We have two very deserving youths tonight that we will be recognizing. And mayor, if you'd like to start off with the proclamation that they will be receiving?
I will. I just realized, I should have brought my glasses, so this will be interesting. Proclamation.
They're just cheaters.
This is a funny fish.
Showing your age.
I don't think so. They're so dirty, how could you see out of those? He doesn't know. 2017 Bristol Youth Service Recognition. Whereas, the future of our nation, state, and community depends upon the energy, enthusiasm, and positive contributions made by our youth. And whereas, it is the duty of all citizens to recognize and encourage youth volunteer service and provide them with right examples and opportunities. And whereas, these special contributions will address some of the major challenges within our communities such as preventing violence or substance abuse. Mentoring a younger child, helping a disabled neighbor, or fundraising for charity to help the underprivileged or combat illness are recognized tonight by the mayor and the Bristol Youth Commission Awards, Annual Youth Recognition Award. And whereas, the individual youth receiving this award tonight have demonstrated outstanding volunteer efforts to unselfishly help others through the use of his or her own thoughtfulness, time, special talents, skills, and dedication to the betterment of the community. Now therefore, I, Ken Kacane, Mayor of City of Bristol, take great pleasure in honoring, what does, Colleen Savino?
Colin Savino and Michaela Milheim.
And to thank him and her for their dedicated and compassionate efforts. Therefore, I assign my name and cause the great seal of Bristol to be affixed this ninth day of May in the year of our Lord 2017. Mayor Ken Kacane.
Tonight, our youth recipients will be receiving a youth recognition medal. They will also be receiving a Bristol Youth Services carabiner, which stands for linking up with our community, and an embroidered bag with "You Make a Difference." Our first recipient this evening is Michaela Milheim. She's a student at Bristol Central High School and is an appointed member of the Bristol Youth Commission. Michaela has volunteered as a youth mentor in the Summer Field Days Program, assisting in planning, implementation, and facilitation of several activities. Michaela also has found time to volunteer at the Hillside Community Church's Necessity Closet to provide food items to needy families and to support two Boy Scout Eagle Projects, ultimately benefiting St. Paul Catholic High School and the Bristol Association Resource Center. Michaela's organizational leadership and communication skills are exceptional. She's a self-starter with a positive attitude, and she has volunteered over 108 hours this past year to schools, community, and organizations of Bristol. Congratulations, Michaela. Our next recipient is Colin Savino. Colin also is a student at Bristol Central High School. He balances his leadership position, sports, and volunteering with his academics. Colin is an extremely personable young man, and he does all he can to volunteer work with energy and a friendly disposition. During the summer of 2016, he assisted the Bristol Chamber of Commerce with preparing for their annual golf tournament, which helps to promote area businesses. He's currently also the president of BCHS's Interact Club. Colin has helped to plan and organize the 2016 Comical Mr. BCHS Paget, this year which raised nearly $6,000 for local charities in our community. Colin has volunteered over 81 hours this past year of community service to schools, community, and organizations in Bristol. Congratulations, Colin. And again, on behalf of the Bristol Youth Commission, we'd like to again congratulate both Michaela and Colin for your service to the community. And I certainly hope it continues in the future, and you can spread that volunteerism and that among your peers. Thank you.
See how nice that we get along for the photo ops?
We get along all the time, what are you talking about?
That's right.
Item number two.
Approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting on April 11, 2017.
Motion made, wave of second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Public participation, Sam Mcelus.
Good evening. I have no complaints. I have something I have to say. I'm going to read it, and I have to give, I think I have to give her this after. I, Sam Mcelus, has to, with regrets, must resign from the disability commission as of June 1, 2017. As I will be moving out of state, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for appointing me to the disability commission. It was a great and learning experience. And please keep the city moving forward. Thank you.
Good luck in your future endeavors, Sam. Thank you for serving.
Thank you, Sam.
Mike Duckall. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael J. Duckall, 116 Lewis Road. I opened up the newspaper this morning, the Bristol Press, and there was an article about Lot Two in the Southeast Bristol Industrial Park, Business Park. And talked about the potential sale of Lot Two. And there was no mention in the article about wetlands being on there. It's of a major concern. I, I had, I scrambled this afternoon to get a, my files, to get a map. This is a city engineering map that you have, I had passed out to all of you. It's quite significant, off to the, off to the right portion. I, I sort of matched that, that colored area is the wetlands. On, part of it is on Lot Two, part of, most of it is on Lot Three. No mention of this in any, any comment upon it in the paper at all from Mr. Malley or the mayor. It's quite big. It's quite big. If you compare it to the 39 Business Park Building, the Pods Building, that's 127,000 feet. That rough, it just sort of is half the, half the square footage, square footage. So that surface area of that wetlands is one and a half acres, which was done by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers approximately in 2004. I don't have the exact number, but just even looking at it, you have a, a copy. I made copies for you to see. Just roughly half, and that, that does match about an acre and a half. Let me tell you, that's a huge bowl there. That is a large wetlands area. You're not supposed to build within 100 feet of any kind of building activity within 100 feet of, of wetlands areas, areas. It's a huge bowl, the size of a football stadium. It's a depression left from geological time. We have kettles up here on the, on the hoppers. That must be a depression left from back, back in the glacial ages. It might be a bernal pool. That's, that's a significant environmental structure to be considered. Animal habitat probably ran away from Lot One in the last two years and, and came back to that location. In a month or two, hundreds of lady slippers, pink lady slippers grow around that, that wetlands. A 1934 aerial map done by the Connecticut, State of Connecticut, they did it in 1934, 52, 65, 70, and then every five years. It exists on the 1934 map of Bristol. That is a long time wetlands area. Should be considered. The website on the BDA used to mention that Lot Two, I think Lot Two, one of them, Lot Three, had the wetlands. I checked. Somebody removed it. Somebody removed it. Somebody removed it from, from the site. And last thing, Lot Number Nine, if you recall, Lot Number Nine in the park has contamination underneath it. That has never been removed, or there's no documentation. Two years ago, I went to the DEP, I found the documentation, documentation, that it's contaminated from an old Superior Electric Canal. There is no documentation, documentation by anybody that it ever was cleaned up. So if that's going to be sold in the future, you better not withhold knowledge from any, anybody. You shouldn't have been holding, withholding knowledge on, on wetlands from any prospective customer, and on the website. So I invite the councilmen, on a nice June day, go to Bayberry Drive, Surrey Drive, Deering Lane. Go to the end of Deering Lane, take a right, walk down the path, and you'll see a beautiful wetlands area that should be respected, that should have always been respected in this town.
I can assure you that any wetlands rules or regulations will be adhered to, and our engineering department will be sure of that along with the wetland panel.
It should never disappear.
Any rules or regulations will be followed. Thank you very much. Thank you. Lana Lamoth.
Leonard Lamoth, 92th Street. I just want to talk about blight. And the two biggest blight things in Bristol are O'Connell School and Bingham School. People bought O'Connell School about a year and a half ago, have done nothing. I was so aggravated last year, they don't even cut the grass. I went out there with my own lawnmower and cut the grass, trying to make it look a little more presentable. I mean, the West End has enough problems. And when you're driving by C. O'Connell School, see the condition it's in, how this company patches things up with pieces of plywood, old skids. There's broken windows. There's graffiti all over the back of the school. I walked by the other day, and there was a notice, and it's been taken down. It was issued by the building department, Guy Warren and some of the guys that work with him, things that were supposed to be done. None of these things were done. They were supposed to clean up the brush, they were supposed to cut the grass, they were supposed to tidy up the grounds, fill some of the potholes. They've done nothing, nothing at all. They haven't put a shovel in the ground. About three weeks ago, I was talking to, called Dave Mills, I go, Dave, there's a, must be something going on at O'Connell School. There's about 60 cars in the parking lot here, this, this is a big crew. None of the cars have license plates. And so Dave called up Guy Warren, and the guy across the street on Park Street, used parking, used cars in the parking lot up there. In my, the way I feel, I lived in the West End all my life, I'm 62 years old, I was born there, I'm going to die there, I'm not moving. I'm going to be one of the last old fossils there to stay there. Everybody else is getting out of town, I'm stubborn. But I don't have any confidence in these people who bought O'Connell School or, or Bingham. They can't take care of an old school. The Board of Education took care of O'Connell School. It's over 100 years ago. It was a beautiful school, and the Board of Education took care of it. These people don't do a thing. And if you expect them to put senior housing in there, they can't even take care of an empty building. How do you think they're going to respond when people have a problem with the, the building in here? And they said, these guys are going to do a terrible job. I mean, I might not, shouldn't even say this, but I'm going to say it anyways, I don't care. If you would have had, like, Dematos, Eddie Demato, or George Carpenter, those people would have done something nice. These people sat there in their laurels for a year and a half, they haven't put a shovel in the ground, nothing. Last year, I, I spoke about this in September, there were five bags of trash, and I brought it to the attention. It took four months before these people, you could ask Guy Warren, four months before this company even responded to picking up the trash. So I think that it's, it's a mistake giving these people any money, if you're going to give them any money. I don't trust them. They don't show a respect for the West End. I have no confidence in them. So I think, right now, the grass is probably about a foot and a half tall. I mean, there, there's got to be something done, they got to be able to clean up. If I did something like my yard like that, I mean, people know where I live, my grass is always cut, my yard's pretty nice. It's, it's not a good thing.
We spoke to the owner yesterday, this is being addressed. He's made aware of it. We're told that construction's going to start any day now. We expected him to pull a building permit today. It wasn't pulled, last I checked, so hopefully, the end of this week, it'll be pulled. You'll see construction starting over there. Unfortunately, any of the other companies that you, you mentioned did not respond to an RFP.
No, but I'm just saying.
So it went out to an RFP, and this was the one who, who it was sold to. But we are on top of him. I go by there often, I live in that area, and it is being addressed. And we're told you could see construction starting very shortly.
Okay, because if construction doesn't start soon, or whatever, I'll be back again.
I know you will.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephanie Beals.
Hi. Stephanie Beals, 115 Country Lane. I'm just here about possibly tracking ordinance here in Bristol. Just an update, and I guess we're working on it. I just want to let you know that HB 6329 is scheduled to go to a vote next month in Hartford. And none of Bristol's representatives have gotten behind this bill. So, you know, there's a concern that, you know, they might not, you know, that this might happen. And so, hence the concern, we'd like to have an ordinance passed here in Bristol. And 16 towns have already passed ordinances. I forwarded, I think about 13. I don't know if you need the rest, I can get you the rest.
We've got plenty.
Four more towns had passed, we had Hebron, Woodstock, Chaplain, and Lebanon. Chaplain just passed their ordinance last night, and Litchfield is expected to pass their ordinance tomorrow. So if you need any more information, I'd be happy to forward it to you, but...
Can you please email me that bill that's going before the Capitol, and I'll reach out to our state legislators and, and talk to them about it? And I know the ordinance is working on this, and I, you should have been invited to the meeting if you're not, you won't be. Okay, so you were. You, the last meeting you were invited to?
Oh, um...
Ordinance. Ordinance.
That's tomorrow?
Nope, it's the 19th. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. The next meeting's the 17th.
Okay.
But you did it, you were invited to the, we talked, you came to the last one, so...
And I was wondering if there was a public hearing scheduled yet?
No, 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 we're still working on the nitty gritty. Ordinances usually take at least four months.
I know, I know, but that vote is coming up next month, so, you know, time is...
I think it's safe to say none of us want that here.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. So, that's all I have, unless you have any other questions?
Please email me that stuff, and, and I'll get it over to our legislators.
Okay, because we have tried to contact them, nobody's responded.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that's all I have there. Item number five. I'm sorry. Announcement, standing my far right.
Yes, one quick announcement from the Youth Commission. I just want to let everybody know that May is Prevention Month, and the Youth Commission and the Council for Substance Abuse is kicking off Prevention Month with the Health Fair this Saturday, taking place at Bristol Eastern High School from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And if you see any of our Youth Commission people around wearing a purple ribbon, you can ask them what that means. It's all about promoting drug-free communities. And that's it for announcements from me.
Your honor, I just have a proclamation to share for my announcement. And this is in recognition of National Public Works Week 2017. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of the City of Bristol. And whereas, such facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedication, excuse me, the dedicated efforts of the City of Bristol Public Works, Parks, and Water Departments, in addition to the Board of Education Building and Grounds Division employees, who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children of the United States of America to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas, the year 2000, uh, excuse me, the year 2017 marks the 57th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Vietnam. Therefore, I, Ken Kacane, Mayor of the City of Bristol of Connecticut, do hereby designate the week, May 21st through the 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week in Bristol, Connecticut, and urge residents to join with representatives of governmental agencies and the American Public Works Association to acknowledge the substantial contributions these employees make to the health, safety, and welfare and quality of life within the Bristol community. In witness of, I have hereto signed my name and cause the great seal of the City of Bristol to be affixed this ninth day of May in the year of our Lord 2017.
And those will be all distributed to all of our public works places where they gather to start work. Councilwoman?
Yes, a few. First, the Bristol Choral Society is having their spring concert this Saturday at 7:00 o'clock at the Prospect Methodist Church. The West End will put together a cleanup crew on Sunday, May 21st. Everyone gathers at the parking lot on the corner of school and West Street, and they plant flowers, they clean up the trash in the area. It's, it's a really good community event. The Bristol Blues Fan Fest will be held the following Sunday, May 28th, at 4:00. You meet the players, there'll be entertainment, food, and fun for the whole family. The Blues Opening Day is coming to Muzzy Field on Thursday, June 1st. And I wanted to thank Cheryl Tebault and the Chamber of Commerce for all the hard work that they put into the duck race. It was very successful this year.
And the Forestville Village Association.
And the Forestville Village Association, thank you very much. And I wanted to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there this coming Sunday. That's it.
Yes, I just want to reiterate what was just said to the Forestville Village Association, to Cheryl, and to the, to the Chamber. It was the fastest duck race I've ever been at. They dumped the ducks in, and six minutes later, the ducks were busting through the gate. It was unbelievable how fast it was. And it just so happens that someone on the council was a winner. Her name is, there's three names, I don't want to give her away. It's not Mary Fortier.
Dave, I would like to say that I'm giving the money right back to the City of Bristol. Summer Camp opens up this coming Monday, and I'm signing my kids up, the city's going to get it all.
Perfect, thank you very much. And then the only other announcement I have is for the kindergartners, potential kindergartners this year. Registration is going on, it's an ongoing registration, it is at the Board of Education, and we're urging any families that have kindergartners to please sign up their children as soon as possible. That's all I have.
Mayor, a couple of things. Jody mentioned the West End Cleanup Association, West End Association having their cleanup this weekend. Also, if you go to the West End Association website, they're planning the summer festival at Rockwell Park, which will be held on August 19th. And then if you look in the website, there's, any vendor who wants to participate, there's still room if you're interested. And there's, the, the association is still looking for entertainers. So if anybody in the Bristol area would like to show their stuff, they're looking for entertainer, entertainers for the day. The Chamber of Commerce is, is having their annual dinner on June 15th at the Aquaturf. It's a great event, but important, more importantly, they're honoring three great Bristolites, Tom Morrow, John Smith, and John Ladavico. Three people who've really given a lot to the communities over the years and spent their entire careers, I think, doing very good things. And in addition, they're honoring the professional young visionaries of tomorrow, the Exchange Club of Bristol, and a very good corporate citizen, Webster Bank. If anybody's interested in that annual dinner. I think Calvin mentioned the Health Fair is at Bristol Eastern, did you mention that? I hear you did. And check out the Senior Centers website, there's some great stuff going on there. They're very active community, very, very much grow, in the growth pattern there. Tomorrow, if you're interested, they're having a statewide competition for Wii bowling at 10:00 a.m. All right? That's it, Mayor, thanks.
Good luck with that Wii bowling, they killed me when I played 300 to nothing almost. They bowl perfect games at the Senior Center. Councilwoman?
Just a couple. The Pine Lake Committee is sponsoring their annual fishing derby this coming Saturday at Pine Lake from 7:00 a.m. to noon. I, I do stop in at that. I'm not there at 7:00 a.m., but I will be there at some point in the morning. And that is for kids ages five to 15, and there's prizes for lots of, for different age groups and different categories, different kinds of, you know, catching the most fish, catching the biggest fish, et cetera. And so there's lots of giveaways there, and people have a lot of fun at that event. One more thing about the Blues. The Blues are a great addition to our city. And one thing that we do as a city is we do host the, the young players that come here, the college-age students that come play here for the summer. And basically, families have the kids live with them. And so if anyone thinks that that might be a fun thing, if you have, you know, Little League players who would love to have a college baseball player spend the summer with you, and you'd like to open your home for that, you can, you know, contact the Blues office and let them know you're interested. Because people who have done that have really enjoyed it, and it just is a great summer fun thing to do. And one more item, the Historical Society is also having their annual dinner next week, May 18th. May 18th at Nucci's. Again, the Historical Society just keep, preserves all of that stuff that makes us Bristol, and they do a great job, and, and this is a fundraiser for them. I realize every organization in Bristol's having an annual dinner, but if you're looking for stuff to do, that's it, thank you.
I have none. Consent calendar, item five.
Five A is to place on file the new hire report for April 2017. Five B is to approve the tax refunds dated May 3rd, 2017. Five C is to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-21 dot 1, Building Permits and Properties Subject to Tax, Tax Lean. Five D is to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Appendix D, Section 3 dot 2 dot Basis for Establishing the Areas of Special Flood Hazard. And five E is to enter into a Hold Harmless and Indemnification Agreement and Covenant Not to Sue By and Between the City of, City and Walcut State Fire Training School Incorporated, and Authorization for the Mayor to Execute.
Do I have a motion? Second, motion main seconded, discussion.
Yes, Your Honor, I have a question on item E under the consent calendar. Is the Wilkett State Fire Training School, that's not the fire training facility on Vincent P. Kelly, is it?
Chief, no. He's, chief saying no.
Okay, where, where is this located? Is it in Wilkett? Hi, Chief.
Oh, yeah, it's on Bowline Road in Wilkett, and it's one of the state regional fire training facilities.
Okay.
And what this is, is a disposition of our S U B A that we recently replaced. They're going to use it for, we retained a number of those for our use in training, and they're going to use some of it for their use in training as well.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number six, committee report, starting my far left.
None for me.
Two, two things, Mayor. BDA is an update, I don't know if you're going to cover the signed contract with the hospital? The, we've came to terms and finally signed a definitive purchase and sale agreement with Bristol Hospital for the, their purchase of the lot in Center Square. After a lot of work, a lot of work went into the detail there, and I want to thank everybody, Ed and his staff at Corporation Council, and the mayor, the council. It's, it's a great achievement. Randina will be in town on the 23rd of May with some more detail about the progress and building plans, so we're looking forward to that. And on the 18th, the BDA Downtown Committee will meet for an update with both Bristol Hospital, Center Square, some other activity downtown, and we're going to talk a little bit more about marketing and some potential plans for some creative grant-making. So, it should be a pretty good meeting. And the other thing, Mayor, I just want to jump on the hospital real quick before you go on. Director of Economic Development and myself were able to get a sneak peek at the building design, and I'll tell you, it is unbelievable. It, it's gonna, it, it was beyond what we, we envisioned, at least what I envisioned. It's a beautiful-looking building. I know they are having a, it will be, press release will put out, but May 25th right now is going to be the unveiling of the building. Look for a press release on that, the hospital will be putting that out soon, they're just solidifying that date, but I think that's going to be the date. And the building is, is unbelievable. It's going to be a great addition downtown. That's all I have. Well, I've got a lot of confidence in Randina. The, the hospital partnered with a, a national firm that I think they're quality. And the only other thing to bring up, really, ordinance is very busy. We've got a very busy agenda, and our next meeting's May 17th. Thank you.
I'm going to give you another ordinance later. Councilman. I have nothing.
Just shortly, Memorial Boulevard Building Committee is still on hold at the moment, and I wanted to thank Councilman Mills for bringing up at the joint board the fact that we need to continue the discussion on that. The Parks Department, the summer registration opens at 12:01 AM on Monday, May 15th, which is next Sunday night into Monday morning, and I wanted to ask Diane if I could with the statuses of getting a new Parks Director.
I think, as you know, we were down to four finalists, and we're in the pre-employment background investigation and reference check phase, so hopefully in the next week or so we'll have an offer made.
Thank you. That's it?
Councilman.
Oh, I have nothing, Your Honor.
Councilman.
None for me.
And I have none. Unfinished business, starting my far right.
None for me.
Uh, none, Your Honor.
None.
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 I have one item, again, the Personnel Director, please, Diane, if you would, and I, if I'd known there wouldn't be none, I would just have said, just stay up there. I'm glad Jody brought up the question about the, the Park Supervisor. There seems to be a couple of other vacancies. At our last Public Works meeting, we were introduced, I think, to the new Solid Waste Supervisor, and then I heard that he left us after a very brief tenure. And I know that we're also looking for a Water Pollution Control Person, I think, Supervisor, again, I'm not sure the exact title. And I know that a couple people are filling in to cover that, because that person has already retired. And I heard that we had made an offer to someone, and their current employer made a counteroffer, and so they're staying with their current employer. I'm just concerned that we're having trouble filling these jobs, and I'm just wondering what the plan is.
I think the Water Pollution Control Position, we've upgraded it in the past, and you'll actually see me come to Salary Committee again soon on, on a salary issue there. It's the job that has certifications required, and it's a tough market to fill. So we are going to be re-advertising that probably in the next few months. We do have a person in an acting capacity, and we're also overseeing that division as well.
So...
A solid waste person.
So, so when you re-advertise that, it'll hopefully be upgraded? Okay.
I hope so.
And so, in solid waste?
The solid waste gentleman actually did, it is as what you said, he went back to his old position, he was offered a considerable raise to go back to his old workplace.
Okay, so do you think that we'll be able to fill that one? I mean, do you see that as something we're going to be able to fill, or do you see that as something that we may have to upgrade as well to get a qualified candidate?
We're not looking to upgrade that position at this time, and hopefully we can fill it as is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? New business, starting my far left.
I do have one new business item, and it is somewhat related to item 11. The School Readiness Grant Program. My understanding is that the school readiness money, and as Councilman Mills has talked to us a lot this year about school readiness and all the benefits we get from that, my understanding is that that's not something that comes from the city budget, but that it's a pass-through, it comes from the state. The state gives us roughly $2 million, and we provide that to organizations in Bristol that are working on school readiness programs. In other words, organizations qualify for the money and, and, and get to use it, and we pass it through that way through the state. My concern is that in this difficult budget year, I'm not concerned that the school readiness program will be cut, but I'm concerned that if our state doesn't pass a budget before the fiscal year ends, that that won't have any money. And unlike other programs, like if we get other grants in other areas, the city has funds that we can fill in in July and August, and then get paid back when the state comes through with money. This is something that there is no other funds. In other words, if it's the Imagination Center or the Bristol Preschool Program that gets a certain number of slots filled with this money, there basically just won't be the money for those slots, and therefore for those employees and those organizations that really depend on that money. And I'm wondering if there's anything we as a city can do to perhaps cover a gap if it's needed. I realize it's a little premature, we don't know that the state isn't going to have a budget by July 1st, but I'm just concerned that that's a real possibility this year.
I think like we do with every issue, as it becomes an issue, the Board of Finance will sit and talk about it and decide what we're going to do with the Board of Ed at that point.
All right, well, I would just advocate that we try and cover that if there's some sort of gap there, because I just feel like there, there are businesses that really depend on that, and obviously the children themselves really depend on it and the families, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilman. Yeah, Mayor, have one thing, please. I want to get a sense from all the council members. The mayor and I communicated today, and I've been contacted several times from the members, or representatives from the Bristol Beat, that's a local radio stream station, I don't know if I said that the right way. But the, the owner lives in my district, and he's a downtown business, and I want to get a sense from members. Beat wants to, uh, broadcast these sessions, and quite frankly, I have no problem with it, I think it's a great idea. But go on, there is a legal issue that Corporation Council is working on. Yeah, I'm not done yet. And we're meeting with the Nutmeg on Friday, perhaps, if not Friday tomorrow. Well, I understand that. I talked to, after we communicated today, I talked to Attorney Conlon. I just want to get a sense for what the, what the, what this board wants, if they think it's a good idea too.
Through the chair, I'd be happy to respond to the counselor's inquiry. I, for one, I'm totally for it, I've gotten to know the owners of the Bristol Beat, and I think that they're providing a great service, as most independent news organizations do, in terms of getting information out to the community. I know Bristol Beat isn't solely a news organization, but the more information about what we do in government that that organization wants to get out to the public, I think is a service for all of us, so I would certainly be in favor of it.
Through the chair, you know, pending any, any legal research or any legalities that need to be dealt with, I don't, I don't have a problem with the broadcasting. And, you know, as you can see, every time we sit here, we have a dismal audience of the amount of people that show up, so if we can broadcast the meeting as it's spoken here, that would be great. And, you know, I don't have a problem with it.
I would just like to say, as many know, my husband owns the Beat, and I would recuse myself from saying anything further.
Also, are we in favor, I don't think the audience is dismal, I think you're pretty...
That's not what I meant there, I meant the number.
It's just us who makes, makes you dismal because of the lack of abstinence on our part, maybe, that's all. Anyway, I would have a problem, obviously, having that. As long as you don't do a play-by-play or anything like that, Steve, I think just the broadcast would be great.
I'm certainly in favor. I, I think all of us up here have actually been on the Beat. The Beat has a Sunday morning talk show about stuff that's going on in Bristol, and while all the council people have been on there, other community leaders in Bristol have been on it, and it's always informative. You get a lot of information because they can go in-depth with questions that the host asks us, and it's a great format, and if, and by them adding the council, I think it, it increases interest in, in all the stuff that's going on in Bristol, and that can't hurt us, so it's great, thanks.
Yeah, for the record, Mayor, I brought it up because, one, constituent asked for it, but number two, as we negotiate, I want the negotiators to understand that this body is in favor of making this, making this happen, so thank you.
Okay. Through the chair, Councilor Proleski, would I be out of line to ask for a little bit of background from Corp. Counsel or from whoever about what the holdup is?
Should we, should we wait until after our meeting? Yeah, we have a meeting, I think it's a little premature to...
You got a meeting with who now?
Nutmeg.
When?
This week. Councilman Brown, through the chair, the issues, as they were presented to me, are not insurmountable, but they have to be dealt with.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other new business? Any business? Any business?
None, Your Honor.
No, sorry.
None. I have one. I'd like the ordinance to take a look at. There's a state statute, 12-81X, and what this state statute is, is it gives municipalities the option to abate taxes for surviving spouse of a police officer or firefighters who were, who died in the line of duty. So, I'd like our ordinance panel to look at this, see if we could come up with an ordinance. I know our firefighters and police officers put their lives on the line every day and night, and if this is something that the city could, could enact by state statute, I think we should by all means do that. It's already a statute. But we need the ordinance, we have to put an ordinance in place. Okay, all right, thank you. We'll look at it.
That's all I have. Through the chair, actually, one thing on the new business before we move on. Councilman Ford, here, on your school readiness issue, did you have a motion or anything you wanted to bring forward? Because I'm certainly in favor of what you are mentioning.
No, I mean, I think I just wanted to bring it to people's attention, and perhaps, if that time comes, that the state doesn't have a budget by the end of the fiscal year, that it go to the Finance Board immediately so that it can be dealt with as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Just as an aside, if I may, just to add, just being on the committee, they are, they are $40,000 short this year, they are cutting some positions from the Board of Education. Just a point of information.
Thank you. Resignations.
There is one resignation from Susan Zeremba, from the Burgess Pond Hoppers Committee.
Motion to accept, place on file, and send a letter to thank. So moved. Second. Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Appointments. Inland Wetlands Commission, Mayor's Appointment to Reappoint Tracy Perro, three-year term to 5/20. To reappoint Zachary Fisk, three-year term to 5/20. School Readiness Council to Appoint Maureen Etson to Replace Rita Krizadnik, Community Representative, Term to 8/18.
So moved.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Tax Collector to Reappoint Teresa Babbin, four-year term to 5/21.
So moved.
Second. Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Is she here?
She just walked out the door.
Yeah, she didn't, no, she was on the agenda, pretty confident, huh?
Yeah.
I'll text her later to tell her she didn't get reappointed.
She's done a great job.
She's been doing outstanding job, and that's one of the things that Glenn talked about, was the rating agencies, they were very impressed at, at the tax collection rate. We are this year near, I think we're close to 99% tax collection.
Amazing.
Item number 11.
Your Honor, there was also one, you, you have the Youth Commission?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
That was the last, last.
Youth Commission to Reappoint Joy Harris, under 21 years of age, Representative, Section 2-9 resignation, on expired term to 3/18.
So moved.
Second.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 11.
Resolution Regarding Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to Execute Any and All Documents Relating to School Readiness Grant Program Application for Priority School Readiness Municipalities from the Office of Early Childhood for $2,918,808 from July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018, and to refer to the Board of Finance, and there is a resolution to read.
So I want you to read it.
I'll read it. Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the Mayor Kenneth Kocain, an acting mayor, is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents relating to the application slash funding slash grant for the School Readiness Grant Program Application for Priority School Readiness Municipalities from the Office of Early Childhood for the period of July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018, including but not limited to any amendments to set application and any final funding slash grant documents and any, and all agreements and any amendments thereto with local service providers to implement grant.
For a second.
Second.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, starting my far right.
Yes.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number 12 is being removed?
It, it is, yes.
We don't need a motion, right?
Uh, we don't.
No, okay. Item number 13.
It's Award of Contract 2P 1780, Engineering Services for Roadway Pavement Management System to Beta Group Incorporated for $57,960, and Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to Execute Any and All Documents Necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 14.
Resolution regarding authorization for mayor or acting mayor to sign applications for local, state, and federal land use permits to perform remediation in wetlands at 894 Middle Street.
So moved.
We need a, someone can read a resolution.
I can read that, Your Honor.
Can you read a resolution?
I can read it.
Go ahead.
Be hereby resolved that the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, authorizes the mayor or acting mayor to sign applications for local, state, and federal land use permits to perform remediation in a wetlands area at the southwestern edge of the property known as 894 Middle Street to facilitate the cleanup of the entire parcel under the supervision of the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection.
Second.
Motion main seconded, just for everyone's information, this is the parcel that received the grant, Bronfield's grant, in the amount of $1.3 million, I believe, give or take, and this, once cleaned up, I think is probably going to be one of the most valuable pieces of property that we have here in Bristol. Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. Is this the, what, is that Mr. Dutko mentioned earlier?
That's Mr. Dutkos. This is, that's Mr. Dutkos.
Is it the same thing?
No, no, this is the property that's across from ESPN, on the opposite corner of the diner, can't think of the name right. Louise's Diner.
Oh, okay.
On Middle Street.
Okay. Okay, great.
The actual, where they sign for lay compounds is that corner.
Yep, yep, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, starting my far left.
Yes.
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 Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number 15.
Resolution regarding approval to file grant application with Connecticut DOT for $57,275 for the elderly and disabled demand-responsive transportation program, also known as the Dial-A-Ride Program, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute, and there is a resolution to read.
I can read that, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application to the Connecticut Department of Transportation for $57,275 with a city cash match of $70,160 included in the Bristol Department of Aging's 2017-2018 budget request for the elderly and disabled demand-responsive transportation program, also known as the Dial-A-Ride Program, is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Kenneth B. Kocain, or acting mayor, is hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this program, including but not limited to any final grant documents. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Roll call, starting my far right.
Yes.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number 16.
A word of contract, 2C17116, roof replacement at Chippens Hill Middle School to Silk Town Roofing Incorporated for $1,284,000, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 17.
A word of contract, 2P1793, engineering services for inspection and evaluation of the Quabic River culvert, inclusive of culvert entrance modifications, to Weston and Sampson